I'd like to call the meeting of the City Virtual Planning Commission to order. We will have the open forum in just a moment, but before we do that, I will give the options for participating. You may, of course, provide comments before the meeting following the directions on the city webpage, or you can call into the open forum by dialing 415-655-0001. That's 415-655-0001. Access code 2632-769-6454, and the password is 1234. That being said, we will now... The agenda looks a little bit different. We have... Oh, I see. All right. The next thing on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. If I could get a motion.
Commissioner Rusterza makes the motion.
Commissioner Serma seconds the motion.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Now is the time for the open forum. The open forum is a time for residents to address the planning commission generally on items that are not already on the agenda, as we do have a public hearing scheduled for later in the meeting. So if you have something you would like to address the planning commission about, please approach the podium. Did we receive any... Planner Crosby, did we receive any comments before the meeting today?
No, nobody has called in, and nobody has written in.
Okay. All right. If there's no one to speak for the open forum, we'll just continue. The next thing would be to approve the agenda for this meeting. I would need a motion.
Commissioner Canely moves to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Charlton seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The first thing on the agenda would be a public hearing to consider requests for two variances from the lighting code requirements at 7001 Harriet Avenue South. Oh, I'm not looking at the updated agenda. That's my fault. There it is. I see that now. I'm sorry. All right. The next thing on the agenda then is the local sales tax presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for having us today. My name's Carl Hugh Miller. I'm the Recreation Services Director.
Good evening. My name is Kate Aiterson. I'm the Communications Manager here with the city.
... referendum that's coming up this... Well, currently, on the current ballot for this November. So, we... The city's putting forward a proposal for an $80 million investment plan into the parks. It covers three big projects: Wood Lake Nature Center, improvements at Veterans Park, and the Richfield Community Center. And this is an opportunity for us to invest into these facilities in order to make them great as for future generations. So, the... This plan didn't come out of nowhere. It came from residents. We did outreach to find out what was important to residents, what facilities were important, and then also looking at what facilities needed... Needed work as well. So, from that, the plan was developed. We identified different funding sources, and a local sales tax was identified as one of the best options for meeting the funding needs. And after getting approval from the legislature, it's now going to be on the November ballot. So, yeah. We'll talk a little bit about the three projects, what the needs are there, and then what the plan is for those projects. And then we'll talk a little bit about how the sales tax works, and why it was proposed as opposed to a property tax or other funding methods as well. So, the first project we're looking at on the ballot is the Richfield Community Center. The current community center was a library that was donated to the city a long time ago. And you can tell that when you walk in. It very much feels like a library. So, it's not really intended for a community center uses, but we make do with it. We have a large room upstairs, a couple of rooms downstairs, as well as a kitchen. It was built 63 years ago, and that shows the foundation wasn't waterproofed, so when it rains, if the water's not diverted far enough, it comes in the foundation. We've had it come into the elevator lift room before, and we've had to shut down the elevator lift room. We have leaks in the roofs where we can't leave stuff on our desks because it gets wet. There's also... There aren't spaces to meet the needs that we're hearing that the community wants. For instance, there's no gym space. There's no walking track space. We do the best we can with what we have, but from what we're hearing from people, a different building with different needs is desired. So, we're proposing a $45 million investment into a new community center. This community center would have space for gyms. It would have a walking track. It would have modern community spaces, so that we could provide more of the programming that residents seem to be looking for to... For youth in the community, as well as families, young kids, and seniors, so that it can provide spaces for everyone to come and enjoy at the community center. The second project is Wood Lake Nature Center. The current Wood Lake Nature Center is a beautiful building, but it also is showing its age. It's over 50 years old. It's doesn't have... It's not ADA accessible. If you've been in the bathrooms, they're quite small. The entrance is barely wide enough for a wheelchair. There are bumps to get in. And the... There are mice and snakes that have come into the building, too. It has a severe rodent problem. And the HVAC system is showing its age as well. We actually have three heaters in the building. Two of them were cannibalized to keep the third one going. So, there are significant needs for the building. And another big thing is we have the school. Every class from kindergarten through first grade comes out to the nature center three times a year, and the current space really isn't big enough to accommodate a full class coming out. We use the event space that we have in there, as well as the exhibit space. And when we have three classes of first graders, second graders, third graders in there yelling and running around, if you've ever been there, it's not really conducive for people to just spend time there and hang out and enjoy nature as well. So, it really... We're trying to fit a lot of uses into a small space, and the team does a really great job doing that, but it really doesn't meet the needs of what the community is looking for out of the Wood Lake Nature Center space. So, what we're looking at is investing $26 million into a new nature center building. The building would support an array of programming. It would have more spaces for educational programming when school groups come out. It would have exhibit spaces and display spaces that the public could come and use. It would be a place where you could hang out and spend time and enjoy with hands-on learning, and it would be fully accessible so that everyone was able to... Is able to enjoy nature and connect with the... Connect with Wood Lake. We do have a couple of pictures. So, the Wood Lake Nature Center is in the planning stages. So, we do have a couple of pictures of what it may look like with a new building. The top-left picture is what the multipurpose space would look like. It would be able to be divided into three classroom spaces, and it would have beautiful views of the lake with a deck out in front. The bottom two are what the entrance would look like as you're coming from the street. The landscaping would come out closer to the street to make it more pedestrian-friendly, and then it would also draw you into the building where you could see through all the way to the lake and enjoy those interactive exhibits. And then the third set of projects is Veterans Park. Veterans Park needs a significant amount of investments, and it's not really just one aspect of Veterans Park. It's multiple aspects. The pool liner is 63 years old. It's the original pool liner for the pool. Every spring, when we turn the water on, we let the water fill up, and we cross our fingers that it doesn't drain out. There are microcracks in the pool liner, and there's a pipe underneath that's slowly rusting away. The trail system is deteriorating significantly. If you've walked on it, you see all the roots and stuff that are pushing the trail up. The ice arena needs ADA improvements. The ban shell needs gutters and some irrigation. And then the pavilion roof is getting to the end of its life. It needs to be replaced as well. So, we'd be replacing that with a metal roof that would last 100 years. So, there's... It's a whole suite of improvements that would make the park much nicer to use for all residents.
So, how are we going to pay for it? Financing this plan right now, the city is proposing three primary funding sources. The first is what we're going to be talking to voters about, the local sales tax, which would generate $65 million in revenue. And then we're combining that with $15 million from state and federal funding. That's funding we secured in 2023, $12 million from the state of Minnesota, and $3 million from the federal government. And those are both designated for Wood Lake Nature Center. Local sales tax was chosen as the best tool for this because it helps share, you know, share the cost with our non-residents who are in Richfield, who are spending money here in our community. We know that a lot of non-residents are coming in to use these amenities and facilities, and so this is a way to ask them to help contribute towards these projects. We've heard that our target is the most... One of the most busy in the state, and so sales tax generated there will be coming from people outside of Richfield. According to the University of Minnesota, who did some analysis for us, 55% of that sales tax revenue will actually come from non-residents. So, when we look back at that $80 million piece of the pie... Let's back one slide. We're estimating that Richfield residents are going to be funding approximately 1/3 of the total cost for all of this, which is pretty exciting. Oh, and I'd also just add that all the surrounding communities around Richfield have their own local sales tax. And so unless you're shopping, like, way south of the river or somewhere else, you are contributing to projects in Bloomington or to projects in Edina, projects in Minneapolis. So, we're kind of catching up with those neighboring communities. So, how would it work? Again, residents, we're estimating, are going to contribute about 1/3 of the project cost. If approved, this will begin next April. We'll start collecting those sales taxes. And when we look at our Richfield residents, we're estimating that their contributions will be just under $4 per month and $46.99 per year. The local sales tax is not permanent. It can last a maximum of 20 years, or if we generate enough revenue prior to that 20-year cutoff, it would end sooner. The other interesting thing is that nothing can change, right? The state legislature gave us approval to ask our voters for these three specific projects and at these specific amounts, and so the city cannot alter course on any of those things without going back to voters. And then finally, a local sales tax is exempt from those essential goods. So, food, clothing, medicine, baby products, et cetera, would be exempt from this tax. Another requirement of the state of Minnesota was that we list each project separately on the ballot, and so when voters are going to the polls this fall... Early voting began last Friday, so you can go vote anytime now. They're going to see the three questions listed on the front page of the ballot, and they are listed individually. The sales tax is not cumulative, so it'll be 1/2% sales tax regardless if one, two, or three projects are approved. So, our voters, their voices matter. This is ultimately a really important community decision that's being made by voters. Like I said, if it passes, the sales tax will go into effect next April, and we'll be moving full steam ahead with Wood Lake Nature Center, begin engagement work for the community center, and Veterans Park will be, you know, starting to chip away at some of those really important projects. If the referendum fails, ultimately, our council will have to make some important decisions about how we're going to move forward with some of these projects. Wood Lake Nature Center, again, has $15 million in federal and state funding dedicated to it already, and we would be at risk of losing that funding if we didn't move forward with the projects. So, those would be conversations that would happen soon after the election if it does fail. We have an amazing website. We're doing our best to really keep it up to date, to update the FAQs, put up extra resources as we get them, and so people can visit arlegacyarfuture.org for more information. And we just encourage people to visit the website, to talk to their neighbors about this, and just try and help get voters the information they need before they get to the polls. So, with that, we will be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the really educational presentation. I was at the League of Women Voters meeting this weekend where this was discussed, and the tours that the city is hosting to kind of show residents the conditions of our facilities were of particular interest of those attending. I'm wondering if you know those dates of upcoming tours or where we could direct residents to that? I think it was in the Richfield recap this past week, but do you have any information on those tours?
Yeah. The next tour is at Wood Lake on the 24th, and I guess I would also add that on the 25th, we're doing an open house for the building project for Wood Lake. So, those are both good dates to note. We also have on October 7th is a tour of the pool and the ice arena, so that would be a good one to go on. On October 1st, we're having another tour of Wood Lake. All those can be found on the recreation brochure, but also on the website as well.
Thank you.
The three separate questions on the ballot is if one passes or two pass and one doesn't, does that project get funding then? Is that how that works, or is it all or nothing?
It's very much you pick what you think is the community should have. If one passes, we'll do that project. If two pass, we'll do those two, and if three pass, we'll do those three. But, yeah, each has to pass individually.
One more question that came up this weekend that I'm just thinking would be great to discuss. If one passes, but the other two don't, or can you talk about if it stacks? If the 0.5%, if all three pass, would that be stacked, or is it still a half a percentage point regardless of how many pass?
Correct. The latter. So, it's 1/2... One singular 1/2% sales tax that we will use to fund the approved projects. So, if it's one, one project is approved, that sales tax will not likely go 20 years, right? It'll be a lot shorter because we'll fund whatever project that is, and then the sales tax would be done because that's what voters approved. But it is confusing. We did our best to try and give clarifying language on the ballot. We were limited in space, but yes, one tax. I would just like to add one other thing. We will have a citywide mailing going out, so if residents are looking for more information, it'll be landing in their mailboxes in the next few weeks.
Thank you. I will say that, like, when I've spoken to some neighbors, the thought of it being cumulative is really... It's really present because on the ballot itself, too, it lists, like, do you want to increase by 0.5? And then I do, you know, on the bottom, it does say it's cumulative 0.5, but it is not... I know, you know, you're limited by statute and so forth, but that's probably one of the bigger communication problems, I think, is people do think that it's going to stack, and they're less likely to support that.
That's helpful feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, we got... You have one?
Just one more thank you for coming here and explaining everything. As a father of three young kids, I'm visiting all three of these locations each week, and they're tripping on the pavement around the trails at Fitz Park. There's not a whole lot to do at the community center except scream and yell and throw things, and they love doing that. I just... I really look forward to having the chance to support all three of these options.
Now, we're ready for our public hearing to consider requests for two variances of the lighting code requirements at 7001 Harriet Avenue. The Richfield High School parking lot is staff report.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Premier Lighting is before us this evening on behalf of the Richfield Public Schools, requesting deviation from the lighting code in order to install two new light poles in the parking lot between Richfield High School and Spartan Elementary. The lighting section of the code limits parking lots to... Oh, shoot. Well, you can just put it on the regular web. Sorry. The lighting section of the code limits parking lots to a maximum of four-foot candles of brightness, and the applicant is proposing a maximum of 4.7. The zoning code further limits the uniformity ratio, which is the difference between the highest and the lowest levels of light, to 20 to 1, and the applicant is requesting a uniformity ratio of 47 to 1. The existing lighting on-site is non-conforming in many ways, and the new lighting would not increase that non-conformity, but would actually bring much of the parking lot into compliance with the minimum lighting requirement of 0.2-foot candles, which is a safety standard. Staff finds the request is reasonable, given the existing conditions, will not impact the health or aesthetics of the community, and will improve to safety. Therefore, we're recommending approval of both variances, subject to conditions related to temperature of the light, the fixture type, and the areas to be illuminated. Thank you.
Any questions for city staff? Is the applicant here? Yeah, if you'd like to... If you'd just state your name for the record, please, and sign in on the sheet there.
My name is Greg Eric, and Premier Lighting is who I represent. Do you guys have any questions on it? Do you understand where this is coming from right now? There's a need for light in the parking lot, and we did all we could to try to get to the code. Weren't quite able to get it, but I feel like we've come to a fair compromise in between.
One thing that I had wondered about is, you know, anything that increases urban light pollution is concerning to me because of the effect on birds and the night skies over there. So, when I saw that 4.0 to 4.7-foot candles lighting increase, that's not a significant increase. Is that right?
Correct. That's very minimal. You wouldn't even notice it. And all the fixtures we're going to do are dark sky compliant, so everything's focused down on the ground versus up.
Does anyone have any questions?
You just said the effect is minimal. You wouldn't notice it. Is that... Would that extend to residents in the neighborhood as well?
Yeah. I mean, there's no light in certain areas now, but where the poles are going to be, there will be no issue with the residents that I can see.
Thank you. If you don't mind, in case there would be any questions, we might ask you to come back up.
That's fine. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to open the public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to speak to this matter, please approach the podium. Did we receive any comments beforehand?
Chair and Commissioners, there was one resident that emailed me asking for more information. I sent her the photometric plans with a little synopsis, and I never heard back from her. I did follow up with the staff report when it was available. On top of that, I still didn't hear back. That's it.
All right. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Serma so moves to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Charlton seconds.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Discussion.
Commissioner Serma here. I'm okay with this situation, seeing the plans laid out in good detail with the simulations of the lighting. Knowing that this property... Knowing that the lot in question is in the center of the school property makes me more amenable to it. There are a couple residences, maybe three or four, to the west across the street, but seeing the way that the photometric plan is laid out, I don't foresee a huge impact to those residences, so I think I'm comfortable with this situation.
I completely agree with Commissioner Serma. I think that this looks good, and that being dark sky compliant is also a good step. So, I was concerned, too, about wildlife impacts, but I don't think there will be much, so.
All right. We would need a motion to take the recommended staff action and the appropriate findings.
Commissioner Charlton moves to accept the findings.
All right.
Commissioner Serma seconds the motion.
All right. We have a motion made and seconded to take this recommended staff action. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda then is a... Is the public hearing to consider an ordinance amendment establishing zoning regulations for cannabis businesses. Could we get the staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I'm going to hold off on that for a second. I will actually... I'll switch back. Sorry. Still getting to know this tech. Last year, the state legislator legalized adult-use cannabis, established the Office of Cannabis Management, and laid the groundwork for what will be a highly regulated new industry. Local authorities have until the end of this year to establish local regulations governing cannabis businesses, and the city of Richfield's regulations will be adopted in two separate ordinances: zoning regulations and registration regulations. Tonight, we are considering the zoning regulations. The proposed zoning ordinance generally divides 10 of the 13 new types of cannabis businesses into two main categories: retail and non-retail. Now, I'm going to switch. Oops. Why is it probably down at the bottom? The retail-only operations of various types of cannabis businesses would be allowed in the C2, which is general business, MUC, mixed-use community, MUR, mixed-use regional, and PUD zoning districts, subject to the... Oh, that's why it was at the end. It really just wants to be at the end of the PowerPoint. Subject to the following locational requirements: along arterial streets only, 500 feet from any school, 250 feet from any residential treatment facility, and 250 feet from attraction within a public park that is regularly used by minors, and finally, 1,000 feet from each The gray areas in this graphic are where retail sales would not be allowed. The parcels highlighted in blue are zoned for retail sales and are located outside of the gray buffer areas. So, these are where retail sales would be allowed. And this is a separate map showing just the attractions within a public park regularly used by minors. Since this map does not encompass all public parks, only certain attractions within them, it was recommended that we make a separate map so that it was easier for people to discern where these areas are located. Non-retail businesses would be listed as a conditional use in the industrial zoning district and must be located entirely interior to a building. It is worth noting that there are not currently any parcels in the city that are zoned or guided industrial. Consequently, it would take a comprehensive plan amendment, a rezoning, and a conditional use permit to locate a non-retail cannabis business within the city of Richfield. And then finally... Not finally, but next, the three remaining types of cannabis businesses that are not classified as either retail or non-retail are allowed as follows. Cannabis delivery business would be allowed as an accessory use only when subordinate to, under common ownership of, and co-located with a cannabis retail business. A cannabis event organizer would be allowed as an office use only in the service office district, the C1 neighborhood business district, and all the same districts that also allow cannabis retail businesses that were listed earlier and are shown here, but would not have the same locational restrictions as the retail businesses because they are not retail. but would not have the same locational restrictions as the retail businesses because they are not retail, they're office. And then finally, a cannabis transporter has not been included. Cannabis businesses cannot be specifically prohibited, however, if the use type such as outdoor agriculture is not allowed for any other industry, then it need not be allowed for the cannabis industry. Richfield does not currently allow outdoor agriculture or any type of transportation industries such as shipping facilities and the proposed ordinance has been drafted accordingly. And that, that's it. We can go back to, to the, thank you. Also slightly different from the last workshop that we had on this, I know that we were talking about allowing event organizers as a home occupation, but it looks like the cannabis rules will be written such that no cannabis businesses will allow to be home occupations. So we have also drafted our code that way and if we find out otherwise in the future and we desire otherwise, we can go back and amend it. And then lastly, there are some elements in here that are related to breweries, some minor modifications that made sense because technically low potency hemp edible drinks can also be breweries. So we clarified that consistent with other related definitions brewers produce product, not manufacture it. A brewery must include a tap room and a micro distillery must include a cocktail room or brew pub. What this does, as we discussed in the workshops, gives us that social element that we'd be looking for in the, in the zoning districts in which these uses are allowed. I don't think there was ever an intent where this would just be purely manufacturing. And this kind of goes back and corrects that. Finally, issues such as registration fees, the maximum number of retail locations, hours of operation and low potency hemp edibles will be addressed by the registration ordinance. Jennifer Anderson, our Support Services Manager is here this evening in case there are questions about those forthcoming regulations and I really appreciate her sitting through the rest of the, the rest of the meeting this evening in case you have any questions. Happy to answer them. Thanks.
Actually, I was going to ask, what is the similarities between the restrictions on cannabis businesses and our, and restrictions on say bars that serve alcohol in terms of like the buffer zones and so forth? Are they similar?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if we have buffers around bars from schools. Okay, all ready. Great.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Our, our liquor establishments in the city have been, some of them are somewhat institutions to the city and there are not buffers that I'm aware of around liquor stores, even tobacco retailers. So this is consistent, I think, with those two.
Is there, was there policy direction from the city council, from others, to treat the cannabis business, the cannabis businesses differently than alcohol or tobacco?
Yes, yes. That was the, the legislature allows it up to a certain extent. And the, in the work sessions where the issues were debated, it was kind of general thought that it would not be prudent to go to the full extent. So these buffers are actually smaller buffers than we could otherwise impose if we were interested in doing so. So they're minimal in order to provide that kind of protection to vulnerable populations, but still trying to maximize the amount of land that would be available for these retailers within our community.
As I, I recall during the work session, I think this summer, we talked about the legally permissible limits of the number of these businesses that could be within the city. I assume that's going to be addressed in the regu, in the regulation ordinance. Could you talk about what, what that number would be for Richfield, what we understand? Because I remember during the work session, it was uncertain at that time what that number would be based on exactly what the definition of Richfield's population is.
Great question. I think through conversations with council and based on our population, I believe the council settled on three retail establishments across the city with an option down the road to discuss and consider a municipal owned dispensary. I think the, the feeling is to not be the first to jump in on that. I know that there are some other cities that are considering that and I think we're interested in, in seeing how that goes. But initially, three retail dispensaries would be allotted. If the council at any time wanted to readdress that, state statute gives them that right to increase that number.
We can, any other questions? Otherwise, we can open the public hearing. All right, we will open the public hearing. Were there any comments received before today?
Chair and Commissioners, I had approximately three people call with general questions quite a while ago. It was more during the timeframe of the work sessions. And I took their name and phone number, contact information, and I did email out the staff report with the draft ordinance once it was ready and I have not heard back from any of them.
If there is anyone here who wishes to speak at the public hearing? All right, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Hui motions to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Canely seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed. Commissioner Conversations, discussion?
I think that this reflects kind of the work session and conversation that we had. So I had anticipated when I got the staff report that it was going to be complicated and I would have to spend extra time with it, but I thought that the report was very straightforward. So kudos to you guys for taking a complicated issue and making it straightforward. I think it reflects the conversation we have. I, so I don't have any concerns and I will support it. I do think that it is a conservative approach. And I think that, you know, it's new, so maybe that makes sense. But I do hope that as we get more experience, that we take a look at this again to make sure that we're best serving the needs of our community. But at this time, I think that I'm comfortable with supporting this as is.
Commissioner, Chair, excuse me. Likewise, I, I, just looking at the maps here and looking at the, the conservative buffers, it appears that there's plenty of commercial space available for the number that we're potentially going to see in, in Richfield. So I, I feel fine with, with what's before us.
Chair, I agree with Commissioner Sturza. It is definitely a more conservative approach. I don't know if I have, I kind of waffle on whether or not that, that conservative approach is, is appropriate or not. My, my bigger issue is the, is the difference in the, the rules for alcohol and cannabis. To me, a minimum, they should be equally seen and to have no buffers around alcohol use. While we do have buffers around cannabis, kind of demonizes the substance solely because it's more recently legal, despite a lot of studies showing it being a safer substance overall. And so I think that's my biggest issue is with, just with that is just over. If we're looking at it from a purely, you know, safety issue or if we're looking at it from just a, it's new and scary issue, I'm happy to see that we are going with the more conservative buffer sizes. To, to Commissioner Canely's comment about available space, it is a lot of, of green parcels, but I think in the reality, it's not, it's, it's a smaller footprint and just the, the logistical issues and actually, you know, establishing businesses in many of those is, is very difficult, whether they're already occupied or, you know, those buildings are suited to be built out, I think is, is actually quite a bit of a challenge. So I don't think we have quite as many spaces as we'd like to think, but we only need to find rooms for three and I'm sure we'll have plenty of entrepreneurs vying for that, so.
Chair, I agree with, and I, I was also thinking about that, the buffer, like why would we treat it differently than alcohol? But I, I think also, if I remember correctly from our work session, is that even if we did reduce the footprints of the buffers, that we'd only gain just a couple parcels. And so I think that, you know, trying to change anything here is really going to not do a whole lot. But I do, I do agree with your sentiment. I just don't think that there's much we can do to change it. Even if we were to drop the buffers, you only gain a couple parcels.
I, I remember, I recall during the work sessions this summer, we had talked about a full buffer and a half buffer. Correct me if I'm wrong, this was the half buffer option we went with, right? And I do recall, yeah, I do recall the full buffer, I think was 500 feet. And we also had talked about that and a one mile separation requirement between businesses. And when we looked at the map together during that meeting, we all said, oh gosh, there's hardly anywhere in the city that any business could possibly go if we did all of that. So I appreciate that this reflects what was discussed during that meeting where it's like, well, we, we all kind of agreed that, okay, we're going to go with some sort of buffer, but also we need to make sure that we have a good number of commercial parcels in this city available so that it's actually possible for this to happen. Because if we, if we go too restrictive, I mean, we could, we could, you know, get into legal trouble if there's hardly anything that could ever, any place that could ever possibly host a business of this type. So I appreciate the work and the, and the responsiveness to the feedback we gave during those work sessions with the city council to consider it. And I think this is a reasonably considered ordinance and I'll, I'll support it.
Yeah, I, I wanted to thank you too for the, I agree with Commissioner Sturza that the, the packet, the agenda item, it was very well-written and clear. I guess I, you know, I have, I don't quite see the difference. We already have the tobacco business on 66th by the flower shop, whatever that is, by Bloomington, and they sell edibles and they sell tobacco, but they wouldn't be able to sell cannabis. And I don't, like, I don't really see a huge distinction between selling edibles and tobacco and then also having cannabis. So I think that perhaps, I mean, this is a new, a new thing, so maybe caution is warranted. But I do, I, I mean, I do think that that's kind of a strange distinction to make since it's, whether the THC is in a gummy from hemp or whether it's in the flower from, you know, the cannabis plant. It doesn't, it doesn't seem like a huge difference. But I, like I said, I appreciate all the, the compromise and the work that went into drafting this ordinance. We would need, if there's no further questions or discussion, we would need a motion.
Commissioner Sturza recommends approval of an ordinance amendment establishing zoning regulations for cannabis businesses.
Commissioner Serma seconds.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And I abstain. All right. The next item on the agenda is, it's liaison reports. Community Services Advisory Commission. Oh, is she not here? That's, okay. The city council. The city council in its past couple meetings has had quite a lot of business from approving collective bargaining union agreements with a couple different unions to going over, they had a work session going over the community survey results and talking about the concerns that residents had and the response rate and so forth and doing some, digging into some analysis of that. They, they passed a resolution recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. They went over the cit, the city audit process and findings. And then related more to our work, planning and zoning fees, schedules were amended and adopted. So that is some of the things going on at the city council. Housing and redevelopment authority.
The HRA met at their last meeting, they approved the five-year public housing plan and it included kind of some highlights of the affordable housing achievements that have been made in the last five years, which is exciting to hear about all the progress we're making there.
School board. Nora Portier. Transportation Commission.
Yes, the Transportation Commission met to discuss several pedestrian safety improvements, ongoing safety improvement projects regarding safe routes to school initiatives. This was around 70th, this was focused on project area around 70th Street between Elliot and 12th Avenues near the STEM school. And they also heard a report from the city about the city's application for connecting communities grant funding to help with improved pedestrian access, particularly around our elementary and middle schools.
Chamber of Commerce.
We met about a week before Penn Fest, that was a large portion of the conversation and it seems like it went well.
All right, and Sustainability Commission.
The city has a new solid waste specialist, Zach McCarty, so that was talked about. And working on the trash walk, which will be cleaning up the parks following Halloween activities. So still no date, but working on it.
All right, Planner Crosby, Planner Beal, do you have reports for us?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. On September 10th, the city council approved Brick's Moore's request for conditional use permit and planned unit development amendment at the former Rainbow Foods site to re-tenant it with Loma Bonita Grocery Store. And I will also say that as of right now, we do not have any land use items for, for the October agenda. We don't officially cancel it until the public notice period is passed. So I can't say for sure that it's going to be canceled, but just keep your eye out for a possible cancellation email potentially forthcoming.
I ask one follow-up on the Loma Bonita. Have we heard whether Popeyes has been responsive to any requests?
No, it, it's been pretty quiet. I, I think they're working on it, hopefully.
At around 6:15, is that right?
Yep, that's correct.
Other than that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Hui, motions be adjourned.
Commissioner Canely seconds.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned.